Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, May 4th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., or as close to it as possible. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Thank you, Sergeant. If we can get some quiet in here, please. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Laban, Giladlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sinepadiya, ten members present, and I quorum Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Council is officially in session. And before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, this is Tuesday, the first meeting of the week. It is our custom to salute the flag. If I can ask Ms. Perry to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Ms. Perry?
Please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Han seconds.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, let's hold general public comment for just a minute, and dispense with consent items, please.
First matter, there is a request to continue item number 10 to May 19th.
Okay, members request to continue item number 10. Is there any objection to continuing item 10 to May 19th? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, item number 1 is an item notice for public hearing, and I believe there are -- there is not a card on the item, but it is an ordinance. Do you wish to wait for 12 council members?
Yes, let's first open and close the public hearing on item number 1, since there are no requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. But before opening up the roll for a vote, we'll hold it on the desk, as we do await 12 members today. Ms. Han?
I was going to call it special, because I wanted to say something on it.
Oh, okay, well then, let's call it special.
Next items, Mr. President, items 2 through 7 are building and safety assessments. Item 3 and 5, the department has advised that those matters may be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid.
Okay, items 2 through 7 now before us, items 3 and 5. The recommendation now is to receive and file these items. We do have cards on items 4 and 7. We'll call those matters specials, to hear from members of the public. So we have on the balance of the items, no requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any further requests for specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on items 2 and 6, and 3 and 5 will be received and filed. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100. Thank you very much. The Council is officially in session. And before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, this is Tuesday, the first meeting of the week. It is our custom to salute the flag. If I can ask Ms. Perry to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Ms. Perry?
Please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Han seconds.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, let's hold general public comment for just a minute, and dispense with consent items, please.
First matter, there is a request to continue item number 10 to May 19th.
Okay, members request to continue item number 10. Is there any objection to continuing item 10 to May 19th? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, item number 1 is an item notice for public hearing, and I believe there are -- there is not a card on the item, but it is an ordinance. Do you wish to wait for 12 council members?
Yes, let's first open and close the public hearing on item number 1, since there are no requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. But before opening up the roll for a vote, we'll hold it on the desk, as we do await 12 members today. Ms. Han?
I was going to call it special, because I wanted to say something on it.
Oh, okay, well then, let's call it special.
Next items, Mr. President, items 2 through 7 are building and safety assessments. Item 3 and 5, the department has advised that those matters may be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid.
Okay, items 2 through 7 now before us, items 3 and 5. The recommendation now is to receive and file these items. We do have cards on items 4 and 7. We'll call those matters specials, to hear from members of the public. So we have on the balance of the items, no requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any further requests for specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on items 2 and 6, and 3 and 5 will be received and filed. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84,
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, May 4th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., or as close to it as possible. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. Thank you, Sergeant. If we can get some quiet in here, please. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Labonge, Lefebvre, Msakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sainpedea, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session, and before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, this is Tuesday, and the first meeting of the week. It is our custom to salute the flag. If I can ask Ms. Perry to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Ms. Perry.
Please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, let's hold general public comment for just a minute, and dispense with consent items, please.
Okay. First matter, there is a request to continue item number 10 to May 19th.
Okay, members request to continue item number 10. Is there any objection to continuing item 10 to May 19th? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing, and I believe there are -- there is not a card on the item, but it is an ordinance. Do you wish to wait for 12 council members?
Yes, let's first open and close the public hearing on item number one, since there are no requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. But before opening up the roll for a vote, we'll hold it on the desk, as we do await 12 members today. Ms. Hahn?
I was going to call it special, because I wanted to say something on it.
Oh, okay, well then, let's call it special.
Next items, Mr. President, items two through seven are building and safety assessments. Item three and five, the department has advised that those matters may be received and filed, inasmuch as the assessments have been paid.
Okay, items two through seven now before us, items three and five, the recommendation now is to receive and file these items. We do have cards on items four and seven. We'll call those matters specials, to hear from members of the public. So we have, on the balance of the items, no requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any further requests for specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll on items two and six, and three and five will be received and filed. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Items three and five are received and filed. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items which public hearings have been held, items eight through 20. Item eight is the confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that matter on the desk?
We'll hold item eight on the desk. And on the balance of the items, members, public hearings have been held, we have reports from committees with recommendations for action. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Do we have any requests for specials? Mr. Parks?
Mr. Chair, for Mr. Reyes, we'd like to continue item 12 till Friday, and continue item 16 for two weeks.
Okay, for two weeks, that new date would be May 18th.
May 18th.
Members, request for continuances on items 12 and 16, seeing no objections, so ordered. Mr. Smith?
Number 14, please, special.
14 called special by Mr. Smith. And I think we can hear that concurrently with item number nine. We'll call both those items special, and hear them together. Mr. Parks?
Number 18, special.
18 called special by Mr. Parks. Any other specials? Seeing none, on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items which public hearings have not been held, items 21 through 40. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, these matters are before the City Council today. We do have cards on item 34, we'll call that special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, I'd like to ask for reconsideration for item nine.
That's --
Special.
That was called special.
It wasn't on the board.
No, I asked for it, this chair, to be called special, and be heard concurrently with item 14. So we'll make that correction on the board. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, everybody take a deep breath here. Ms. Msakowski.
Item 24, to go back to Public Safety Committee for your correction.
Okay, members request for item 24 to be referred back to the Public Safety Committee, seeing no objections, so ordered. And sergeants, can I ask for your help, once again, in keeping it quiet behind the horseshoe? Colleagues, we'd appreciate your help with asking your staff for any conversations that don't have to be immediately in your presence, to be taken either behind the horseshoe or behind the pillars here. Colleagues, items 21 through 40 are before us. 34 has been called special for cards from members of the public. On the balance of the items, public hearings have been opened and closed. Item 24 has been referred to committee. Any further requests for specials on these items? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Next items on the supplemental agenda are items which public hearings have been held, items 41 through 43. There are two recommendations on item number 42, on recommendation number one.
Okay, 41 through 43 now before us. Public hearings have been held. Any specials? Ms. Msakowski.
42.
42 called special by Ms. Msakowski, leaving items 41 and 43. Mr. Parks?
At 41, we have a motion going forward to add the 8th District, and Ellie Housing has found some money, so it's an amendment to the report there.
Okay, we can consider that without objection, unless somebody wishes to call it special. Seeing none, we'll consider item 41 as amended. Mr. Smith?
Number 43.
Called special by Mr. Smith.
Excuse me, on item number 41, is that a motion that's being distributed to the council members?
Yes, it's going around now, adding $65,000 in the 8th District from a Housing Department fund.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Are we in receipt of that amending motion, Madam Clerk?
Not yet.
Okay, why don't we hold it temporarily until that comes around?
Okay, if we have 22 forthwith.
Okay. On, we're holding item 41 for that amending motion. So that's 41, 42, and 43 called special. Forthwith on item 22, and Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next items are, excuse me, items which public hearings have not been held, items 44 and 45. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, these items are before the council today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address this body on items 44 and 45. Public hearings are open and closed. Members to call either of these items special?
And, Mr. President, just for council's information, on item number 44, there is a phrase that needs to be added. It's correct on the motion, the agenda is incorrect, and there is something to be deleted. The words "and execute" should be deleted, and then should be added and present to the council for approval.
Okay, without objection, we'll consider that amending language, and seeing no further discussion, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. So before coming back to items called special, we now turn to general public comment for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction, but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls for it at this time is Judy Carnes.
I was told, whoops, good morning, I was told that there would be someone here who could take my material. Great, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to address the City Council, because you ultimately will be asked to judge, or to pass on the hiring of the new animal regulation, or Animal Services General Manager. I'm coming to you now, at the early stages, to ask you, to ask Mayor Hahn to rethink his appointment of Madeleine Bernstein, the president of Los Angeles SPCA, to head up the headhunting committee, to find the new general manager. There have been seven general managers of Animal Services in the last 13 years, and there are some terrific city employees within that department. And Councilwoman Hahn, the Harbor Animal Shelter is the best. They deserve a raise, and I hope it will be forthcoming. Now, the reason that I'm concerned about SPCA's involvement, the vice president of SPCA will be formally sentenced tomorrow in Los Angeles Superior Court for embezzling almost $940,000. We don't feel that SPCA has been forthcoming in letting the public and their corporate sponsors know of this fiscal problem. They've had a fundraising telethon as recently as January, where actresses Barbara Eden and Betty White were very active. They've been continually sending out mailers, soliciting donations, and their donors haven't known what's gone on. My second concern with this is that SPCA has been cosponsoring the wonderful Petey Pitchford Animal Companion Shelter in Long Beach. They've been working side by side with the city of Long Beach. And when we addressed the Long Beach City Council two weeks ago, none of the city council people were aware of this embezzlement. Again, it's fraud that's been going on for at least two years, and I've included the 990 form from the year 2001. Please, please, we need a great Animal Services General Manager, and we need your help. We don't need additional problems.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, let's take item number eight, next, confirmation of a commissioner.
I guess --
And it is coming forward. Colleagues, again, we have a recommendation from committee to approve the appointment. Have a seat. Members wishing to be heard on item number eight, Ms. Msakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel, Mr. President. I am here to speak in support of Mr. David Voss's appointment to the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission. Mr. Voss has been really an invaluable member of the 11th District, particularly the southern part of it. I won't go through his whole resume, but he's been president of the Westchester Chamber of Commerce. He is an elected board member of the Westchester Neighborhood Council. He has been invaluable on the Planning and Land Use Committee in terms of looking at projects, and we've got a whole heck of a lot of projects coming into the Westchester area, not the least of which is the Playa Vista project. So he's very well-grounded, a lot of experience, and I was chatting with him earlier about the new mandate for the city of inclusionary housing, and the requirement that areas take their fair share. So I thought I would just ask you, Mr. Voss, you know, sort of your overview of planning in terms of the perspective and the hats you wear, how you look at what your role's going to be there.
Well, thank you very much for the kind words, and thank you for having me here, Mr. President, and honorable council members. Generally speaking, I have a common sense approach with an understanding that the rules are there for a reason. But the understanding that with the equivalent of the population of two Chicaos coming to the Los Angeles area by the year 2030, that the necessity of understanding how to use new zoning methods to conduct infill in a way that doesn't adversely affect us as much as possible, and to do common sense thinking on how to apply the zoning that we have, is just critical to trying to make sure that the quality of life we have in Los Angeles is maintained or indeed improved.
Thank you, and I think if we could have a mission or a mandate for all our commissioners to use common sense, and not to mention the council as well, I think we'd go a lot farther. Mr. President, members, I'm very, very happy to support this commission appointment, and ask for a unanimous vote on the council.
Thank you, Ms. Msakowski. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your service to the city. Forthwith on item number eight, please. That is approved. Madam Clerk, we now have 12 members present. We have held an ordinance or two on the desk. Ms. Hahn had called one of them special, so we're not going to take it up quite yet. We have had a retrieval of a speaker card on item number seven, unless a member wishes to call this special for discussion, or we can, we're ready to vote on item number seven. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on item seven, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labonge?
Mr. Padilla, I apologize, I was in a public hearing upstairs, but there was an item on the Olympic torch relay, special event, I want to call it special.
Item number?
Yeah, 44.
Okay, so, motion for reconsideration on item 44. Let's open the roll in reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 44 is reconsidered, and called special by Mr. Labonge. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up item number one now? It was called special by Councilmember Hahn, and there are 12 members present.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it would have been easy to probably have let this go through on consent, but it's always a good opportunity to, for me, to be able to stand up and give my strong support to the reauthorization of our downtown business improvement district in San Pedro. And this is a bid that has a great challenge as we move forward in San Pedro. Some of you on the Budget and Finance Committee yesterday heard me talk a little bit about our waterfront development in San Pedro, and the grand promenade that we're bringing there. But clearly, another part of the mission of those of us who care about San Pedro is a revitalization of the downtown business district center. And this bid has been operating now, I believe it's their fourth operating year. They've been very successful. They're working really hard just to do basic things like keeping our streets clean, marketing downtown San Pedro to those who would want to come in and work and develop there. Obviously, around the holidays, working on making the downtown a festive place that people are going to want to come to. Every first Thursday of the month in San Pedro, we have what we call First Thursday, and it's an opportunity for the artists, galleries to be open late at night, for the restaurants, and to have people come down and shop in our downtown district area at night. We are very excited. We have three housing development lofts and luxury rental apartments that will be going right in downtown San Pedro, that we think will really begin to jumpstart the renaissance that is going to take place. So I wanted to take this opportunity, I know I have Steve Robbins here as the president of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, supporting this, but it's just an opportunity for me to stand up loud and clear and be a cheerleader for the bid, and to remind all bids in this city that the Central City Association, which is one of the more powerful organizations here in Los Angeles, getting involved in every possible issue in Los Angeles, started out as just a small business improvement district, and they've come to really wield incredible influence and power throughout Los Angeles. So I want your support today to reauthorize the bid, and to say, I want to go on record saying, I would like to enlarge the bid and expand the bid, to take even more area of downtown San Pedro in the future. So thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Forthwith on item number one. Next item, please.
Next item's item number four, and that was called special for cards from the public.
And we do have two speaker cards on item number four. The council calls forward Mr. Robert Frankel at this time, to be followed by David Reese.
Good morning, members of the council. I have sent a letter, hopefully is in the file, to Councilman Cardenas and council members, and would just like to reiterate what I wrote in the letter. The commercial property owner is protesting this assessment, the crux of it is one of notice, that the notice to barricade the property was mailed on a Thursday, May 9th of the year 2002. Because the company that it was mailed to has no mail service on Saturday, we didn't receive the letter until Monday, May 13th, which was the same day that the barricading took place. So we, in essence, had no time available to be able to do the work ourselves, prior to the city doing it. I would just like to add that the property owner owns several commercial properties in the San Fernando Valley, and has been a good, not a slumlord, a good neighbor, has hired me specifically to accelerate development of the parcel in question here, and I'm working vigorously with the special services at the moment regarding the vacating of adsement with the city of Los Angeles, in an effort to develop this property in as timely a manner as possible. So once again, it was simply a question of notice, and I have spoken with several people in this regard, and had we been given an opportunity to do the work, it would have been done, as we have done, in any case where we've gotten notice to improve the property or to take care of graffiti, that sort of thing, we have done so.
Thank you very much. David Reese.
Morning, Mr. President, council members. I'd just like to point out in support of Mr. Frankel's comments with regards to the property. I had been working with this city inspector, probably about nine months prior to these incidents on various graffitis, fencing, and so forth, where we had a great relationship with the inspector, in fact, I met on numerous occasions personally, to ensure that the inspector's requirements were met. In this particular case, as we, as Mr. Frankel had indicated, we literally had no time to respond whatsoever. Obviously, the notice being issued on May the 9th, and the work being completed the following Monday. And of course, the company responsible for the property, the owner of the property, would absolutely unaware of what was going on, or that the work would be completed that particular day. In fact, I did speak to the inspector, who'd indicated that notices were sent out timely. That obviously was not the case. So again, we'd like to protest the assessment of the $5,200, and ask that that be dismissed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number four. Are there members who wish to be heard on item number four? Seeing none, we have the committee recommendation before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number nine was called special, and I believe that's the council was going to take up item number 14 also with that.
Item 14 concurrently, without objection.
Council President Padilla, if I could, colleagues, we do have a few cards here for individuals, I know it's not a required public hearing, but would ask that we allow those individuals to speak.
Okay. Is there any objection to reopening the public comment here for these two items? Okay, we do have four speaker cards. Let me call them in the following order, and ask them to form a line behind the podium. Mr. Joe Vidi, Mr. Jim Algar, Mr. Kevin Singer, and Mr. Robert Cole. And folks, we would appreciate your brevity. We've had an opportunity to be heard in committee on multiple occasions, and you're not shy about sending correspondence to us as well, so.
Good morning, Alex. And I will read quickly again, but I'd like to get my thoughts in on this issue. My name is Joe Vidi, and I'm elected board member of the Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council, that's the GHNNC. I am chairman of the ad hoc committee charged with the evaluation assessment of the DWP water rate surcharge, was presented to our board on December 29th, 2003, by the DWP. After a series of letters to and from the DWP, the GHNNC presented their recommendation in a letter to Greg Smith dated March 23rd. the GHNNC presented their recommendation in a letter to Greg Smith dated March 23. Copies of this letter were distributed to the full council and to all the DWP members of interest. The GHNNC opposed the proposed eighteen percent increase but accepted an eleven percent increase contingent upon two recommendations. One of these can be satisfied by Greg Smith's motion to have an independent financial analysis, assuming the results of the study are submitted to all neighborhood councils in the city of L.A. for review and comment as soon as the study is available and in plenty of time so that the NCs can provide informed recommendations to their respective city council representatives. The second recommendation deals with the issue of fairness. The GHNNC believes that security systems needs and improvements in water quality should be shared equally by all single-family residents throughout Los Angeles. Based upon the DWP numbers for FY-0405, a $55 water rate surcharge for each homeowner in Los Angeles will provide the necessary funding for its share of the eleven percent water rate surcharge as now requested by DWP. Water quality improvements are needed to improve the drinking water for the health and well-being of our residents. The water quality currently used for our lawns and trees do not require higher water quality standards. Therefore, the increase in cost should be paid for by the beneficiary of these changes, and that's all the citizens of Los Angeles. We disagree with the DWP's position that billing each household a year will de-incentivize water conservation. There's no reason to believe, after all these years, that the residents of L.A. will change their water conservation habits with a surcharge in place of a water rate hike. As the DWP has stated in their letter to the GHNNC, and I quote, "The city's success in encouraging conservation under the current rate structure is a primary reason Los Angeles residents have avoided any water rate increases for the past eleven years." So, let's do the right thing and keep the water rates the same, and bill all L.A. single-family residents a surcharge of $55 per improved water quality and security. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Allger.
Good morning. I want to take a minute to thank certain council members who've really been very helpful in this issue. Councilman Smith and his motion that he brought forward, need to say we all support that. Councilmember Cardenas, who has helped us a lot in the committee, Councilman Garcetti, Councilmember Grul. You've all been very helpful in this. The neighborhood councils, at least some of them, accept this eleven percent increase reluctantly. And the reason we do is because we feel that certain things still have not been made out to the public. For example, the eleven percent represents $24 million of revenue that they're anticipating getting this year. But they're going to transfer $29 million to the general fund, which means that by definition, they have the funds to do what they need to do until January. They just can't do it and then do the general fund transfer. Now, whether we agree with the transfer or not, it does seem like this needs to be more out in the open. Just the other day, the Los Angeles Daily News ran an article that said that the water security is being threatened now because the council and neighborhood councils and so forth have delayed this vote. I reject that. Department of Water and Power has always said security is first and foremost, and that they will always do that first. Matter of fact, the quote that I was given was, "They would let the pipes rot in the street before they allowed security to be affected." I would, however, ask this council, before they approve an eleven percent increase or any increase, take into account the people who can't afford it. People are getting squeezed in this city, and we need to take every step possible to try and avert a rate hike if it's possible. Furthermore, for the future rate hikes, I understand that this is actually the beginning of what's going to be a thirty-two to sixty-four percent rate hike over five to ten years. That's a lot. And we need to make sure that any audit or any review that takes place takes place from an angle of which how to avoid that, as opposed to taking place from an angle of how to justify that. If we can try to avoid it, and we can't avoid it, then at least we know it's justified. And that's what I ask of this council today. Thank you.
Mr. Cole, Mr. Singer?
Thank you, Chair. Robert Cole, Chair of the Empowerment Congress West Area. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Smith and Grul for proposing that the DWP experience an independent financial review. And also, I'd like to thank our Councilman Benard Park who has been very instrumental in working with us to come to a resolution regarding the increase. We do understand the city is strapped financially. However, we do not want the residents to suffer additional hardship of being taxed without any type of independent financial review. At this time, we'd like to support the neighborhood councils becoming more involved, as we've had several meetings and actually during our March meeting, we held a vote, and the stakeholders as well as the board opposed the eighteen percent increase, as well as put on hold their support or denial of the additional eleven percent increase based on the independent financial review. So, again, we'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to hear our needs and our issues, but ask you to make sure that we are involved in the decision-making process for this rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you. And is Mr. Kevin Singer still here?
Good morning, council members. Today, I'm down here speaking for myself as a citizen of Los Angeles. I'm also involved with Westside Neighborhood Council, so I'm speaking as a member of the council today as well. I hope that you, as council members, have had a chance to review the water system rate action findings and recommendations by Los Angeles City Council, I mean by Department of Water and Power. And I really hope that you take a look at page eight on there, and you focus in on maintaining appropriated operating cash reserves. If you look at this, you can see they're increasing the reserves by $20 million. You know, I just want to make sure that before we go ahead and do that and take that course of action, that we're able to justify that to the residents of this city of Los Angeles. Because I certainly understand increases based upon need to improve infrastructure, but increases based upon increasing our reserves, I think that's going to be a harder pill to swallow. As you go through this process, really take your time and make sure that you really go through it, item by item, because we saw a lot of things have slid through in the last couple of years. And as you look closer and closer, the dots seem to connect. So, please, take your time with this, and let's make sure that it's something the public feels good with, the neighborhood councils feel good with, and the city knows it's making the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on items nine and fourteen. Colleagues, I know this is going to lead to a good discussion here in the council, but if we can indulge the presence of the chief of police, who has a very brief but special announcement today. We have closed public comment on item nine and fourteen. We'll turn to council discussion in a second, but first, let me recognize Councilmember Zine and Chief Bratton for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, there was ceremony at Parker Center, a solemn ceremony, National Police Week memorial ceremony, remembrance of the slain police officers of the city of Los Angeles from the time the city was founded and its nearly 200 very dedicated professional members of the police department who've been slain in the line of duty. And there was a ceremony yesterday in front of Parker Center. Saturday was the police celebrity golf tournament, and this is National Police Week around the country. And Councilmember Ms. Msikowski and I and our colleagues want to recognize the members of the Los Angeles Police Department and present a certificate of recognition to Chief Bratton in recognition of National Police Week, and to remind all that safety and security in this city is provided by the members of the LAPD. And it was ironic that when I drove in this morning, I saw the bus that is parked on Main Street, a bus that has arrived from another part of this world to show what terrorism does and those that protect us from terrorism on a daily basis, members of the Los Angeles Police Department. So, with heartfelt thanks, Chief, for your leadership, for the men and women of the LAPD who every day deliver that service to the community of Los Angeles that we appreciate and we want to recognize and show our appreciation to you for the leadership and to the members of the department that work tirelessly, day and night, to provide that public safety to the people of Los Angeles. Councilmember Msikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And as you said, the week began with the golf celebrity terminate, and then yesterday, the memorial tribute. It shouldn't just be National Police Week. It should be National Police Year. It should be Police Day every day. And even today, as we're going to be debating some police issues in front of us, we really have to stop and remember, as I think the chief did yesterday in his speech, that we ask an awful lot of the men and women of Los Angeles Police Department. We ask more and more of them. And I think that we stand here today in tribute to them, and all week long, really pulling out all stops to really say that these are the people who we most admire. These are the people who put themselves at risk. These are people who ask their families to take that extra measure. That we recognize that. We appreciate that. And we are here to support them every which way we can, and are proud to have the chief here today in honor and tribute of all the police officers, men and women, who serve us day in and day out. Chief?
Thank you, Senator. Well, on behalf of the men and women of the department, both sworn and civilian, I'd like to thank the council for your attention to this very important issue. Men and women of this department do work very hard, oftentimes at great risk, to protect the citizens and residents of this city. And a good year for the Los Angeles Police Department is when no names are added to the monument in front of Parker Center. Unfortunately, this year, two names were added, that of Detective A. Bumone, tragically killed in automobile accident while on duty, and that of Police Officer Ricardo Lizavaga, who was killed, shot to death, in the line of duty. And so, their two names yesterday were added to our memorial. And I thank those members of the council who schedules did allow them to attend that service yesterday. We will proudly display this in Parker Center during the remainder of this month that is intended to honor the sacrifices, the men and women of the police profession in America, and particularly those here in Los Angeles. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Labange would like to just add a quick word as well. I'd like to recognize for this, Mr. Labange, please.
Yesterday was a beautiful ceremony, and it was very impressive. And I'd just like to ask if we all stand right now in this council chambers for the Los Angeles police officers and all police officers in this country, and ask the public to stand with us just for a moment, as we recognize this week, as we recognize the sacrifice, each and every one of them, every man and woman who's a police officer who leaves their homes and don't know if they're going to come home at night because of the duty calls. So, for the moment, let's just take a moment of silence and recognition of their great dedication. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And thank you, Ms. Msikowski, Mr. Zine, and Chief Bratton. We will now return to the item that was before us. These are items numbers nine and fourteen. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. We have a list of speakers, colleagues. Our first speaker will be the Chair of Commerce Committee, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I'd like to withhold on ordinance item number nine. And I'd like to, I think that'll give the community and the neighborhood councils a little bit more time to understand what the ordinance is about. It's been a very complicated issue and something that's been culminating for quite some time. But what I would like to comment on is the fact that transparency in the past has not been forthcoming out of the Department of Water and Power. For those of you who have been following this issue, it took three committee meetings of the Commerce Committee here in this building, in the full view of the public, to finally get a five-year forecast, not even a detailed forecast, but a decent five-year forecast on what is in store at the Department of Water and Power on the water side of what it costs to do business. And that came about, I'd like to give thanks to the neighborhood councils, who were diligent in coming forth and expressing their concerns, and expressing the number-one concern that I heard the neighborhood councils express is, "We want to know the truth." And what I was gathering from some of the people at the Department of Water and Power is, "You can't handle the truth." Well, excuse me, the ratepayers can handle the truth every time they pay their bills. If we can expect them to handle that truth, why can't we expect to handle the truth about what it costs to deliver clean and reliable water to Angelenos? It's something that hasn't gone on in the past, but it's something that actually item number fourteen brought about by Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith, addresses that in the future, what we're going to see is no longer politics in water or power rate increases. We're going to see the truth prevail first. We're going to see public meetings where we get explanations of what it costs to deliver that water or that power, and then and only then will this council be taking a vote. Then and only then will the neighborhood councils be able to say, "We understand what's going on, and we like it," or "We don't like it," or "We think this is what ought to happen." In this particular case, some neighborhood councils actually weighed in and said no to the eighteen percent, and they said, "But maybe an increase is necessary." And we actually got some documentation from some neighborhood councils that said, "Maybe an increase is necessary, and a one-time eleven percent increase is in store." And that's what we have here today. We have here a compromise that was brought about by a lot of hard work, by a lot of Angelenos, a lot of hard work from neighborhood councils, a lot of hard work from this council here to say, "Okay, it's been since 1992 since the Water and Power Department has been granted a rate increase on water." We all know, ladies and gentlemen, that in the last 12 years, the federal government, state government, every agency, air, water, all kinds of agencies have required the Department of Water and Power to increase expenditures, including security, increase expenditures on delivering that water clean and safe. That being the case, an increase is in store. But at the same time, we should not allow any department to keep us in the dark. And that's what item number fourteen is about, brought about by Councilman Smith. It's about making sure that we take the politics out of the discussion, and we just put the facts on the table. And it comes down to one thing. The neighborhood councils, Angelenos, this council needs to be told the truth, the full truth, and we can handle the truth, and then and only then will we allow the department to go forth and charge the ratepayers a penny more than they pay today. So, with that, once again, item number nine, if we can put it over, and item number fourteen will hear today. Thank you.
Okay. Just procedurally, for folks who are out there, Mr. Cardenas has withheld on item number nine. For ordinances, we need 12 people unanimously or higher vote for it. Because he's withheld, that will just carry it over till next week, one week, and then at that time, it will just take an eight-person majority to pass, if that is the will of the body. Our next speaker is Ms. Msikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a member of the committee, let me thank both Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Smith, and Ms. Hahn as well. One, Mr. Cardenas, for being on the committee and really making the committee go through some serious hurdles on this. And I think Ms. Hahn can agree. We've had very lengthy hearings, very inclusive participation. And members, let me, I think one of the reasons with Mr. Cardenas withholding on this, for those who aren't committee members, really take the time to review this work that was put together by Deloitte Tuch for the water system rate. And there are some things one might question, but it lays out the groundwork preliminarily, not in the long term, but preliminarily as to what we might be facing. The neighborhood council members who testified at our hearing did say, "Well, we may question some of those longer-term judgments." And that's why the committee report says, "Let's go out and not just get this snapshot of where we are, but a serious independent study of where we are, what we might be doing on cost controls." But members, one of the things I don't think we've asked our community representatives as much as we perhaps need to, 11 years is a very, very long time for not having an increase in something. How many of our renters haven't had a rent increase in 11 years? How many are paying the same price today for gasoline that they paid 11 years ago? How many are paying the same price for a gallon of milk that they paid 11 years ago? Prices do go up. That doesn't mean we just have an open door. It means we need controls, we need limitations, and we need to acknowledge there are both expenses on the infrastructure side, on the security side, and, yes, the transfer side. That is not something that should be hidden, and I think it's rather appropriate that this is being discussed at the same time we're talking about our budget and talking about water and electrical power system transfer to the city's budget. We need openness, and I think we've heard that over and over again. I appreciate the neighborhood council leaders who said, "We may go along with this 11% reluctantly, but there's a lot more on the agenda, a lot more we need certainty of, and a lot more we need to really shake up this system, understand what we're spending, understand what the needs are." But members, let me just leave it with this. We got a report just this last week from the mayor's infrastructure committee, talking about how seriously far behind we are falling on overall infrastructure needs. about how seriously far behind we are falling on overall infrastructure needs. Water and Power can be independent and can step up to the plate on its infrastructure needs. If we don't pave a street and there's potholes, there's going to be a bad effect on the city's economy. If we don't fix our water pipes, and they burst, and we aren't providing power and water, basic necessities, that's something that our citizens are going to see and feel very, very soon, and it's an infrastructure area that we can't allow to deteriorate and get further and further behind. We shouldn't allow it across the board. But this is probably one of the most important, that we need to make sure we've got the upkeep, we need to make sure that we are providing. Because, members, for those of you who've been around here, when those water systems burst, and those pipes burst, and they take out the properties around them, and cause deteriorated service, it's serious, not only for the economy and the location where it happens, but it's serious overall in trying to recapture it after the fact. So, I appreciate the work that's been done. A lot more work needs to be done, and I think we'll have this discussion again next week. But again, get more and more specific in the details of what we're going to asking Water and Power to do in its new covenant with our ratepayers.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miskowski. Our next speaker is Mr. Padilla, to be followed by Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I recognize that Councilman Cardenas has asked for this item to be withheld. I, first, want to, I guess, respect that, but, second, just tell you that we need to vote for this. We need to grant this 11 percent increase. If we replay the tape to a discussion that we had several weeks ago here in this chambers, I think there was a very animated discussion, a very heated debate, on the merits of an increase. Do we need it? Do we need one this big, or do we not need one, when the original proposal for an 18 percent increase came our way? And then, it quickly turned into a discussion about process, about process, about outreach to the community, and really about how transparent the department was or wasn't during the course of them recommending to the commission, the commission recommending to the council, this 18 percent increase. I think they've, we've certainly, as a city, made large strides over the last several weeks in reevaluating everything. The transparency, I believe, is now there. Mr. Smith has asked for an independent review, a financial analysis, if you will, to be made for any and off future water rate increases. That 11 percent that's being recommended for us to act on today is accompanied by such an analysis. In addition to that, we're establishing an even more comprehensive analysis for all future water rate increases. So, colleagues, I believe we have achieved what we sought for several weeks ago, and we can point to the recommendation before us and say, "Yes, this increase is warranted, this increase is justified." If anything, what's making some people in the public, and maybe some people around this horseshoe uncomfortable, is that there's even more increases that are going to be needed over the next couple of years. And we can deliberate whether it's a series of 5 percent, a series of 6 and 1/2 percent, but what the future, the additional transparency has shown is that we went far too long, those 11 years were far too long without additional rate increases to maintain the security levels, to maintain the integrity and the quality of our water supply system in Los Angeles and throughout the state and the southwestern United States. So, colleagues, if there's a little discomfort here, it's not whether or not we need this 11 percent increase. Our department believes we do, our commission has told us we do, and the independent review folks that have been brought on board to look at this for us agree that we need this increase. So, we need to move on this sooner rather than later. I prefer that it be this week, but if it's not going to be today, then at the latest, next Tuesday. But, yes, this also begins not a longer-term discussion over the next couple of years, but a discussion over the next couple of weeks and months about what we need to be doing over the next several years to maintain our bond ratings, to maintain the security levels, to maintain the quality and integrity of our water system and our water supply for the residents and the businesses of Los Angeles. So, that's my position, colleagues. I'm in support of this. I urge you to vote for it as well. I would prefer a vote today, but if it's not going to be today, the next Tuesday at the latest, let's do this. The department has asked, what we have done, has done what we've asked for begrudgingly, but they've done it, and we have all the information now before us. It's time to act.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith, to be followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your offer of support of my motion to create a process by which we forever open up the whole system, so not only the citizens of this city know, but we as council members know how these numbers are derived at. I have said all along that my concern was, I don't know what was driving 11 and 7. I still, to this day, don't clearly know. And the reason is, and I want to thank Mr. Cardenas for putting this off one week, is we all got this document yesterday afternoon, late in the afternoon, and I have not really had a chance to fully analyze the impacts upon it. I know Ms. Miskowski is right, and Mr. Padilla are right, that the system needs to be protected. What I don't know is how much money we need to really do that. And if you look at this document, I still am very, very confused. It says, "Maintain a double A bond rating and target minimum debt service to coverage two times." There's no dollar amounts on that. I don't know what we need to accomplish that. We have a letter from our bond agency saying, "We're okay. We know you're going to do something, but we don't know what, but you're okay." We have some needs in the department, but we don't know, as a council, what those numbers are on those needs. And I think this gives the week to really think about it, rather than rush into decision-making. Because as I sit here today, I don't know where 11 keeps coming from. I know it came to us once, we said no, we sent it back, it came to us again, and there's nothing that tells me, "You got this much money this year, we need this much money more next year, and that equals 11 percent." I have still not seen that document. And while I commend Mr. Solis for trying to bring us some numbers and some financial accountability, those numbers still aren't there for me yet to make that decision. So, I thank Mr. Cardenas for giving us a week at least to look at it. I want to take that week and work with my staff. Mr. Solis, I want to sit down with you, I want to look at these numbers, Mr. Gaywe, all the rest of you, and find out what is driving this number 11. I wish you'd come back and said you needed 12, or 9, or something, then I could have said, "You know what? They really did look at it, and they figured out what it really is." But we still haven't come to that point yet, so I can't vote today. And then, I thank Mr. Cardenas for allowing us to think about this a week. And again, I thank everybody in the community in particular, and in this council, for supporting my motion, which will bring about a process, so we will never have to go through this kind of process again, where everybody's so confused. So, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker, to be followed by Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I understand sort of both sides of this debate today. I have been, had the advantage of being on Commerce Committee, where we've really been delving into this for a while. It was actually, some of our mouths dropped two months ago, when Tony really was the minority voice. Cindy and I were voting for the complete 18 percent increase, and Tony said, "No. I think at this point, I'm good with recommending an 11 percent increase, and then waiting, studying it, and seeing how we might get neighborhood councils involved." Greg then came back with what I think is a really good policy ordinance for the city of Los Angeles, that in the future, no rate increase will be voted upon by this body until we've had a complete third-party audit, and until we have had, neighborhood councils have the opportunity to weigh in on that future rate increase. And let me just say again, this has been another example, in my opinion, of where neighborhood councils have really shown how valuable they are in the city of Los Angeles, and how this city will never again go back to the old way of making decisions, or go back to the old way of sort of doing things behind closed doors, making decisions that most impact people in their homes without the opportunity for them to weigh in. I think we're going to have a few more of these crises, a few more of these storming City Hall by neighborhood councils, but eventually, you are going to be a part of the process that many of us envisioned when the new city charter was passed back in 1999. Having said that, as we said before, we can handle the truth. Neighborhood councils can clearly handle the truth. But I think part of what the truth is that I've been able to believe in is that we do have safe water, we do have reliable water, and we really do have security issues that affect the safety and reliability of our water. We do have infrastructure needs that we must be beginning to plan for and pay for. And the fact, I mean, the truth is, DWP, right now, the water is three gallons of water for one cent. I mean, that's a, that's a great price. We talk about the people that will sometimes pay a dollar or more for a designer bottle of water, they're paying probably $8 a gallon for water, for a designer bottle. So, I think the truth is, we need to go, come back and put in perspective of what this safe, reliable, valuable water is for people. The other thing is, I know someone brought up the idea of people who are at a low income or poverty level in the city of Los Angeles, and unless I'm wrong, you can correct me, but I understand that those who are at a certain income level or on lifeline in the city of Los Angeles, they will not be impacted by this rate increase. Again, that's a bit of truth that we need to bring out today, so that it doesn't seem like we're being insensitive of those needs. I'm ready to vote on this. I think the case has been made. Through much struggling and fighting, the neighborhood councils have been brought into this process, but I really want to thank Greg for making sure that the next time around, we're not held against the wall with ideas of bond ratings being dropped if we don't pass it that week. I was not comfortable being put with my, with my back against the wall on that. That's not going to happen anymore. But I am ready to vote for it today, if the rest of, if we have the votes for that. I think it's warranted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel, to be followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to also praise Mr. Smith today. It is, I think, the motion, and I was pleased to second that motion, that you put forward, because I know in the public's eye, if we share with them the truth, as was mentioned, and we share with them what the facts are, they're willing to accept that. We had to do that last year on the trash fee, which was a huge increase, but we were able to tell them, "You've been paying $6, we're increasing it to 10, but the actual cost is $33." That I had a meeting this last Saturday with all of the leaders of my neighborhood councils, talking about the budget, and many of them talked about the 11 percent water increase that was on the same par as the entire budget. And all of them said, "We just want to be provided the opportunity to have input, and secondly, to understand why this increase and why this level." And I think, as Mr. Smith mentioned, the concern I have had is that 11 percent, where does that come from? Is it something that we can hang our hat on? And I think the independent review is critical, and I believe that unless that independent review has been done, I have questions about 11 percent. So, I wanted to stand today, though, particularly to support the motion that will set in progress a procedure, a transparent process, that all of us can feel comfortable with, as we're having to make tough choices here as a city council member that impact all of our constituents. Because we do want to preserve our water quality, we do want to ensure safety for our water, but we also want to be able to justify any potential actions. So, I think this motion is critical, and I look forward to seeing that independent analysis that gives us, I think, the information that is critical to any potential water increase. But I'm not sure that that 11 percent is the accurate number. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Members, I wanted to make a couple of points on matters. I know it's extremely important that, as in the past, that people who've sat in these chairs have made very tough decisions for the benefit of the people in the long run of Los Angeles, and investing in the infrastructure of Water and Power is extremely important to us. But one key element, and, Mr. Smith, I thank you, and I'm proud of you, because you came from the field, as I did, and you got to this seat here, and you're able to articulate that. You remember, Mr. Smith, that there used to be a desk here for the city engineer, and anyone had a problem, they'd go right to that desk. Well, we have a Department of Neighborhoods, and I think it's important that they have a desk. So, not just this department, but any department goes to and says they want to communicate to the neighborhood councils, "How do you do that? How do you do that?" Water and Power is extremely skilled in bringing this power from as far away as Canada, and Utah, and Arizona, through the system. They're very skilled at bringing water over 300 miles on a gravity-fed system to us, but we have to invest in that infrastructure. And as someone of a relatively new part of the West Valley, and other parts the inside, I have streets in my district, they have 1923 water lines that have to be replaced. And how are we going to do that? And it's a system that we all need to create and support. We're going to hold this over a week, so that we digest this information and have a full understanding of the value and the importance of Water and Power, and the commitment that we have to make to the infrastructure, to the safety of water quality. You know, all that bottled water that you spoke of, Ms. Hahn, none of that is regulated by the state, none of that is regulated by anybody. Is that correct? No one looks at that, no one opens those bottles, there's no testing to those things. But all that is so important for our system, to make sure that we assure water quality for that. But members, and, Mr. Zion, I'm looking right at you, I want to see a desk, I want to see a desk for our Department of Neighborhoods, so that when the departments have a proposal, we had a controversy about alarms, is that correct? Ms. Gruel and Ms. Hahn, you were championing on that, and, Ms. Miskowski, I remember when the rates were raised by the Police Commission, how do we get the information to the people? Through our Department of Neighborhoods, through our Department of Neighborhoods, and that there's a desk for them to go to, that Water and Power could go to early on and say, "This is what we need to do," and start the process, so it doesn't become a hurdle, but becomes a help. Because information is knowledge, is power, and there's no better department in the city of Los Angeles that provides power than Water and Power, and without water, we're just a little pueblo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. How many gallons of water do Angelenos consume each year?
I don't consume it all, so I can't answer for everyone, but...
All righty. Our next speaker is Mr. Zion.
Okay, Jack, I'll call a question. But before I call a question...
Can't call it, Anta.
Am I the last one?
You're the last speaker. You are, so, go ahead.
Well, if I'm the last speaker, I'll call the question. Otherwise, I was going to go on and rant and rave like everyone else, but I'll call the question. Thank you.
All right. Question has been called. Mr. Ludlow, you okay with that? All right. If there's no objections to that. The question has been called, colleagues. We have this before us. It's been, no vote necessary on item nine because of the withholding.
We can discuss 14.
Sure. We have item number 14 before us. Madam Clerk, if you'll let us know what that is.
Item number 14 is a Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee report, and it's pursuant to Councilmember Smith's motion regarding an independent review and several other issues regarding the DWP water rate increase.
Okay. We're just voting on item 14. Not on the rate increase, which will be held over for a week because of the withholding vote. Please open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That item is approved. And thank you again to the community members for coming out and for making your voices heard. If we can take up item 42 out of order next, please. I'd like to recognize Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, this is the item we debated on Friday and asked that it be held over, so we could have the Police Department representatives here to deal with the issue. It was generally a report on the consent decree, and more specifically, a report on making some modifications to the consent decree. An item that became somewhat a sticking point, because we have two different opinions in committee, from the committee on it, was whether or not we should go along with what the Police Department requested, and the independent monitor, and the Department of Justice, and our inspector general concurred with, and that is to allow a new policy in LAPD to allow uniform officers under very, very limited and specialized and focused authorization to have the ability to use confidential informants. We asked that the department come back to explain that issue, as to when, and if, and how it would be governed, and I know we have Captain Crowe here from the Consent Decree Civil Rights Unit, and we have Captain Crossley here, as well as others, to talk about it. So, if I can ask the department to specifically respond to the issue of, if this new policy is allowed by way of modifying the consent decree, when would you come back with a new policy, and how are you envisioning that it would work within LAPD be given this authority?
Scott Crowe from the Police Department Civil Rights Integrity Division. As I indicated on Friday, I don't think the chief of police has formalized a, or formalized a plan in terms of a rollout for this process. We're still looking at the issue conceptually. At this point in time, what I'd like to do is to be able to answer any specific questions that, I believe, Mr. Vayr Ragosa wanted to know about the specific guidelines and so forth.
Well, why don't we talk to Captain Crossley, then, who I understand you're with the Narcotics Division, and just tell us, you might be one of the units that might see some utility for this policy, were it in place, were it to be put in place? What kinds of guidelines, what kind of things, what kind of authorization would you be looking at to allow some uniforms to be given approval to use confidential informants?
Well, although at this point, I don't have uniforms working directly for me, I can tell you the controls that we have at this point in time. And in my discussions with other drug commanders at meetings and conferences throughout the country, we have undoubtedly the most... country, we have undoubtedly the most extensive and the most closely scrutinized informant system of anybody, from what I can ascertain. And that goes from the very, and I'm not sure exactly what all you want to know. I mean, I can take you through the whole process, the whole packaging process, the review process. I'll tell you what our major concerns are relative to how we control informants. We document every single meeting with informants. Supervisors are apprised before an officer meets with an informant. Two officers are always present, two officers that speak the language the informant speaks. I mean, we have a whole list of criteria.
Those were the kinds of things that I think we were specifically looking for, because the Inspector General came in and said that he provides oversight and audit after the fact. But I think a lot of the council members weren't specifically familiar with what that process is, when and on the occasions that you might authorize confidential informants, and what you, what kind of hoops you go through and put the officers through to allow it to be utilized.
Okay. It is one of the areas that's extremely closely scrutinized through the consent decree. And we are audited at this time, as was mentioned, after the fact. But we're audited by, all the packages are audited by the Bureau and the group and the division commanding officers. Detective Bureau conducts quarterly audits of all informant packages. Currently, our informant packages are audited by Civil Rights Integrity Division, the Inspector General's office, the Independent Monitor Audit Division. And then Corral, the Independent Monitor, comes back and audits Audit Division of how they audited us. So we are thoroughly audited. As far as the front-end controls, I started to mention some of the things we do. We allow no off-duty contacts, we don't allow officers to provide their home phone numbers or any personal information to informants. All informants are admonished that they are not in any way an official or have any official status with the department. We use only their numbers, no names or any other personal information in arrest reports or other documents. We document every meet, every payment, every contract that sits in the package. All of those are reviewed by supervisors, then by the officer in charge, then by the commanding officer of the involved division. And I, as the department's coordinator, ultimately approve every package. We attempt to verify if informants, even if they're living with another informant. We don't even want that much of a problem, because then informants tend to use one department against another, or they'll work the department, two different officers against each other. We emphasize that informants are a department resource, they're not personal property. We emphasize to officers, they do not personally control. There's a tendency to, that gets to be their informant, we don't allow that. That's, and we control that, because they have to tell the supervisor before each and every meet or each and every contact. If they happen to get a telephonic contact from an informant, they have to then immediately report to their supervisor and document that. And like for all my informants, I sign every one of those contact sheets. The packages have to be updated every three months. There has to be a contact with that informant within every 90-day period. And in addition to that, there have to be a variety of updates in each and every package to keep that informant current.
Thank you, Captain. Members, we are also now circulating a motion that I would like to add, and hopefully it'll be a friendly amendment to this item A, which was the recommendation by Mr. Zine and myself in committee, which would document and require that as the, were this to go forward and we get the Department of Justice and the Federal Court's agreement to allow the consent decree to change to allow this, that would set in place that the department report back as to what, if any, changes in the policy they will make, report back as to where and how there have been units requesting this special authorization, and allowing us, again, have that oversight capability to make sure that this is not widespread. I think the concern was, on Friday, that this was going to be a wholesale, widespread change, and in no way is that meant to be. Members, we did have the police chief here just a moment ago and talked about working with and being respectful of our police department, not only this week and this month, but all the time. And this is something that the department has requested, and again, I just want to reinforce, the independent monitor who oversees us on the consent decree said the department is doing a good job in this relation, in this realm. We want to support this. The Department of Justice, which is a second criteria, has reviewed it and said they have no problem with it. We heard from the Inspector General, Mr. Barot, on Friday, saying he had no problem with it. Again, this is not going to be a wholesale change, but allowing the department to utilize skills, to utilize with very, very tight controls, this capability to help them solve crimes, fight crimes, and deal with crimes, sometimes of the most violent nature, going on in some areas of our city where we need to establish those controls. So I ask for an aye vote to this amendment on Part A, 1A, of our recommendation to go forward with the consent decree modifications as approved by our working group and all entities under the specifications as allowed here.
Thank you, Ms. Sikowsky. Our next speaker is Mr. Zine, to be followed by Mr. Parks and Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you. The use of informants helps solve crimes. Officers who are assigned to uniform detail, gang enforcement, are especially select and specially trained for that?
That's correct.
The average patrol officer in a black and white motorcycle officer, helicopter officer, would there, in any case, be involved in informants?
As it stands right now, there are no uniformed officers who are allowed to have interaction or to maintain informants. That's the current policy of the department, and that's also covered by the Civil Rights Consent Decree.
This will provide that uniformed officers in special detail would have that authority, that jurisdiction, to obtain, gain, an informant?
It is not the department's intent to have a wholesale use of informants by uniformed personnel. I would not envision that the mainstream of the department's patrol force would maintain informants. I believe what the Chief of Police's intent is, if we move forward with this, is to, from a very deliberate and thoughtful process, look at those specialized divisions who have uniformed officers who might be conducive to utilizing informants on a very limited basis.
So it would be very restrictive. And the officers who are assigned to special details, for example, the gang detail, the requirement is they must be in uniform. They're the ones who are on the street, who know who the gang members are, who know what the gang members do, who have communication with the individuals in those communities, the closest connection, that are specially selected for that assignment. And we are saying that with that screening process and with all the audits that are done, we feel safe and secure that they'd be able to handle that properly.
That's the basic construct. And what we would include now, that we saw wanting in the Board of Inquiry, was an aggressive training process. There was mention last Friday of 12,000 narcotics arrest reports that were examined on the Board of Inquiry, 275 of those arrest reports had to do with uniformed personnel that referenced the use of informants in their arrest reports. And what the Board of Inquiry further determined was, there was no training for those uniformed personnel. And at that time, they were not prohibited by department policy from having informants, and yet they were not given the training. That's one of the major differences that you'd see under this process that we didn't have prior to the Board of Inquiry.
So it seems logical that if we are serious about eliminating gang violence from the city and sending a message to the gang members that we are serious about that, to give those officers, so especially select officers, in those details, the tools to do this job, we give them a badge, we give them a weapon, we give them training, we say, you go out on the streets and protect us, and you confront the most vicious individuals in our society that are terrorizing communities, but we're not going to trust you in gaining information which may lead to an arrest and subsequent incarceration and reduction of crime. I find, I think it's appropriate, I think it's long overdue, and I have no distrust for a police officer who is sworn to protect and to serve. With all the audits, the mounds of audits that are done to make sure it's done properly, it's not that every single officer is going to be involved in this. And I really wouldn't have a problem with proper management control to have other personnel involved in this. When you take that oath, you are sworn to uphold the law. So I find it amazing that there's some opposition to something that seems logical, the closest link to the gang members are the officers who are working those details. And there are some that say they shouldn't have the ability to have confidential information. They couldn't establish that relationship when they're working those streets every single day. So I strongly support this, I think it's appropriate. And I just have one technical question that was along with this same measure, was the dollars that were requested, and I don't know if it comes under your purview or someone else, for the outside consultant from the Police Commission regarding retaliation. Was that part of this package, or has that already been moved last week?
I think that's part of a different package, but I might defer to Ms. Sikowsky on that.
Just a point of clarification, on the retaliation, the Police Commission recommendation for 25,000 for an outside consultant, was that approved last week, or is that still up for review?
That was approved by the Commission last week. Oh, you're increasing it?
Well, no, there was discussion, and then it was postponed till today, as I understand. And I had a concern regarding the allocation to outside consultants when I looked at and met with Cory Brent yesterday in the City Attorney's Office, this retaliation policy, why we couldn't utilize city resources.
That hasn't come forward to the council yet.
Okay, so that's not part of this package? What, Barb Garrett's shaken. I just want some clarification, because I don't want to pass up the opportunity if we can discuss that, I don't know if it's the proper time or not, and I want to verify it.
The CLA report with those recommendations, as approved by Public Safety Committee, was in council Friday. It was Agenda Item 19, and that was approved. It's separate from this item.
But that was approved, this was held over today?
Yes.
Okay, so that package has already gone forward. That's my clarification. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our next speaker is Mr. Parks, to be followed by Mr. Ludlow and Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a series of questions, so if you could hold my time when they answer, I appreciate it. One thing I just wanted, for the education of those who are watching Channel 35 and also council members, I'd just like, have a series of questions. How long has LAPD had a prohibition or did not allow uniformed officers to have informants and relegated to a detective function?
I'd have to check on that, Councilman. I'd be speculating, but I believe there was, the first time that I'm aware of, that it was actually codified would be in Administrative Order Number 3, which came out at some point in time after the Rampart incident.
You may look at the detective guide and determine, I think it's been historically a detective assignment. The other issue is, just as clarification, is that you mentioned earlier about the guidelines you've been put in place. Why are these guidelines important as far as monitoring the meeting, keeping track of it? Why do you put those things in place?
Well, handling the informants is a risky business. I mean, essentially, we're dealing with not the upper crust of society, because they aren't the ones that have information. So we want a lot of stringent controls, because we're dealing with people who have frequently had problems with the law before. So we want to make sure that officers don't get, the people, detectives are involved, don't get too close to those people, and don't establish relations with them that would compromise their position with the department.
So most confidential informants are criminals?
A good number of them are, yes.
And what do they normally want from us to give information?
They either want to work off a case, or they want to be compensated.
That's right. Two things, they either want money, or they want their case worked off. And generally, or both?
Right.
Okay. Who is normally in a position to do either one of those? Is that a uniform officer or a detective?
Well, historically, it has always involved detectives, because that's the way we're organized.
Okay. And detectives, because they have, what, a relationship with the DA's office?
That's correct.
And so they would be the ones that if anybody can talk to the DA about a case, who's best suited to do that?
The detectives are the ones, in most situations, to get the filings.
And when you run into a informant, does he normally know what division is handling the case, or does he just want to inform, and we have to get him directed to where the detective might be resolving the case?
I'm not sure.
If a person walked into a station and said, I want to give you information, I want to be an informant about narcotics...
Usually, we hook them up with a narcotics detective.
We'd have to get them to narcotics. So they don't know who those people are. And why do we take them to the detectives in narcotics?
They're the ones that handle narcotics cases?
Narcotic cases, and they understand the issues of what the DA will do and what may be available as it relates to working off a case. Because they work with that, right?
That's true.
Okay. On item 108, one thing I just want to make sure that I understand it, Captain Crowe, Councilman Zine mentioned about limitations. Would you just read what that 108 says and see what limitations? Because what I get out of it, it says all uni, or appears to say all uniformed officers. It doesn't limit it to gang, it doesn't appear to limit it to a small number of officers. It looks like it says an option for uniformed police officers.
If you're talking about 108 of the consent decree, the prohibition is against all uniformed officers.
Okay. But when, in the document that's attached to our form, what basically the rationale that we want to remove the personnel and uniform assignment shall not maintain or use informants. We say it, basically, the rationale for effective crime fighting, the option for uniformed police officers to have confidential informants is desired. So this document doesn't limit it to gang only?
Apparently, that document doesn't. As I stated before, I don't envision the department going in any way, shape, or form to widespread use of informants by its mainstream, uniformed officers.
And I think someone mentioned earlier about paying informants. Is that something healthy, that we want people in uniform paying an informant? Is that something that we would support?
I don't envision that that would happen with a uniformed officer.
I mean, but that's what we're saying, a uniform officer with a confidential informant, the two things that they may work on is either paying an informant or working off their case. So if a uniform informant, a uniform officer has a confidential informant, then they would be in a position to end up paying an informant for that information.
In every situation, even with detectives, both those things involve a supervisor, whether it would be that uniformed officer supervisor or detective supervisor, they're involved in every contact and in every payment.
Okay, but the issue, and the reason for that is, so informants won't later allege that they gave the officer something that they didn't, as far as a payoff?
It's a further control to try to make sure that we don't have problems.
Okay. But the issue is, if a supervisor's there, then the issue, why can't a detective be in the position to serve as that department official to deal with informants? Why do we need a uniform officer? And what does it add to have a uniform officer part of it?
After this question, if I can ask you to press your button again.
I think uniform personnel, in certain circumstances, as was pointed out, maybe Mr. Zine, are in a position to gain information that might facilitate the use of informants.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Our next speaker is Mr. Ludlow, to be followed by Mr. Smith and Ms. Sikowsky for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. The paragraph 108 was really the crux of not allowing the full package of the consent decree modifications and clarifications to move forward last week. And it was a pretty healthy debate about that, and today was intended to shed light on that paragraph. And one of the items that was important was to really justify the need for this section, for the expansion of the use of confidential informants. And I think just, Councilmember Parks, just did an excellent job of walking through a number of issues in the language in 108. But not only that, I think right where you were was really sort of the heart and soul, I know, for a number of us here, which is trying to passionately explain why we absolutely need this, given the context of your answers to several of his questions. I'd like to hear, and I know there are a number of members that'd like to hear, again, what do we lose by not having this, given the answers that you just gave to Mr. Parks?
Well, additional source of information, I don't, if you have, the more you restrict the number of officers who use informants, then obviously the fewer informants they'll have, generally speaking. But if we're to increase over what we have now, even by a small number and some specialized units, you increase the likelihood that you're going to gain criminal intelligence or information that might result in a successful prosecution of a violent criminal. You might ask if, why do we use them in the first place?
Well, yeah, and again, part of what we've got away here is the potential costs to moving in one direction versus the losses by not moving in a direction. And I think what I wanted to speak to is this motion, the friendly amendment, or the amendment that's been introduced today by Councilmember Sikowsky and Councilmember Zine, which would actually have you all report back in 30 days on the need for the modifications. And what I can say is that if we had to vote on the whole package today and had to vote, including 108, gentlemen, I'm sure it's in there somewhere, but today, there hasn't been a compelling statement as to what we absolutely, what is the reason that we absolutely need this. And so I think, to our colleagues' credit, Councilmember Sikowsky and Zine, this gives another month to figuring that out. But right now, and I know Councilmember Vera Ragosa had asked some of the questions last week as well, as to how do you... Vierigosa had asked some of the questions last week as well, as to how do you give us that compelling reason why we need this in light of the weight and gravity of your answers to what Mr. Parks said about who's really utilizing this, who really needs to utilize this, who really has the expertise, the skills, and the ability to fully utilize both dynamics. And so far, I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything that compels us to move in this direction. Because this is a huge area to open up. So, colleagues, I would just say that this motion before us is a healthy amendment, and it's a healthy theme to give another month to this discussion. And I think the department really needs to step up and provide the additional information. And it is compelling to me that the independent monitor, as well as our inspector general, are both supporting this. That is compelling. But I think there's still sort of a foundational question before us that a couple colleagues still have asked, and I haven't heard the answers yet. So, I support this motion which is introduced today, colleagues, because I think it does give us in the department the month to answer those questions. And I commend all involved for trying to be very detailed and diligent on a very sort of foundational issue at the heart of the Christopher Commission Police Reform.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith, to be followed by Ms. Miskowski and Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I want to first of all commend Ms. Miskowski for her motion. I think it really clarifies process, and that's good. My question goes back, and I'm going to ask you just one question, Captain Crossley, and I greatly respect you, so I'm going to hinge my vote on what you tell me. What is the absolute need to do this? Is there a need out there that's not being met because of current policy?
I'm probably not the best person to answer that. I am the informant coordinator, but I deal strictly from a narcotics perspective. And because I have no uniform personnel working for me, I'm probably not in the best position to answer that.
Well, again, I could just refer back to the basic importance of informants to police work.
Now, that's not what I'm asking. I want you to tell me that you need to have this right now because there's something going on out there that you need these people out there doing this, and you can't do it because you're restricted. Is that the case?
I can't point to a specific problem that we know of, that we have, that we're actively working on, that we can't solve without this.
So, you just think it's a tool you'd like to have, but there's no demonstrated need to have it?
It's a tool that we'd like to have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Miskowski, to be followed by Mr. Parks.
Well, again, I think that answer is that it was a tool they'd like to have. Members, you know, we see down here when violent crime has erupted, and we are reacting to it. What have we done? We have increased reward motions. We've increased reward motions for sources and information leading to the arrest of criminals who have convicted, who are involved in serious violent crime, in serious numbers of violent crime. This, we've done that because we wanted to give a tool to the general public. That tool was, people come forward, tell us, we need your information. We've been at press conferences with the chief where we've asked for that. This is another tool that can help. This is another tool that is absolutely a volatile tool and a tool that needs serious supervision, serious training, serious limitation. That's what my motion asks for. Members, again, this is something we have talked about, the consent decree. I personally don't think it has tied the hands of the department. We've lived with it for three years. But now that the department and all of our monitors have said, you know, this department has stepped up. There are differences in training. There are differences in supervision. There are things that the department is doing right. There are the audits now that Christopher Commission initially asked for, and that finally, with the inspector general, we're now doing. This is just one of those tools in an array of tools. But I think, again, when we look at the most serious impact of what is affecting our community as it relates to public safety, it's those, the occurrence of violence, the occurrence of violence against our officers, the occurrence of something where we are asking the department to reconsider deployment, to put more officers on the street, to put detectives on the street at the most important time. This is another tool in that array of tools that the department has requested, that I think they have merited, they are talking about it with the level and controls that are inappropriate for it being in place. This motion asks for them to tell us one more time, through those details, what, how, where, it would be implemented. But I think to not give it to them at this time is just, it's not going to happen. It's not likely going to happen in the long term in the future because we know how difficult and arduous it is to go through the consent decree changes. Again, I think it is something that I feel very comfortable about, that our working group, the mayor's office, the city attorney's office, the police department, plus all of the outside agencies that are looking at this, have said, we concur in taking this step because we think the controls are in place to help make it effective.
Ms. Miskowski, also just to clarify, I think a technical correction on recommendation to that second line, should that read procedure? Is that a procure? Or should that be procure? We'll check on that, okay? Procedure, okay. Let's change that to orally to procedure. There's no objection. Mr. Parks, to be followed by Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Captain Crossley, you work with all of the, you said, the informant file and detectives. Is there a, do you see any shortfall if uniform officers brought informants to detectives and they manage informants?
Well, that's the way we currently are.
I mean, is there a shortfall because of that? Do you see that there's a loss? Do you find informants not willing to work with you?
Well, like I said, I don't have any uniform people coming to us for the most part. My detectives have their informants. What I will say is in the last year, we've come to the point where we're about as good as we can get as far as being compliant with the consent decree and informant packages. So, these controls are working and the audits are working, and we're coming out really, really clean on the audits. So, they're doing what they're supposed to do.
But as always, the controls are working on everything we know about.
Touche.
Touche. Okay. The one thing also, I think is important, and this just goes back in my almost 40 years in the police department, is that we've never allowed uniform personnel to have confidentially reliable informants. And the reason for it is that we often found that it was easier for an informant to corrupt a police officer than an officer to rehabilitate an informant. And it's always been a detective function because a detective is better suited to talk to DAs, to be in those controlled environments, to pay a person or to work a case off. Where uniform officers haven't gotten to that level. And so, that's my main concern. The other issue I think we need to clarify is that it's not something that they had and we're giving them back to them. We had a small group of Rampart officers that slid into the informant business without a lot of people's knowledge. And they weren't trained to work with informants because that wasn't part of their roles. So, we're not giving them something back. We're basically rectifying the situation that they should have never gotten into. And historically, if we go back in all of our histories, on some of our major cases, generally detective personnel were the ones that worked up informants that have come back with the biggest return on that investment. And we've done quite well without having uniform people in that process. And so, I would just say that I would agree with the motion that we go back to committee and look at it. But again, it's not a compelling reason to open the door. And as I stated in our last meeting, we go back to Miami 1 and 2, Rampart, York, Philadelphia, any place you find police corruption scandal involving informants, it's generally informants and uniform officers. And so, that's the lesson that we should take into mind.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Mr. Vierigosa is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Ludlow.
Yes, Mr. President, members, again, I want to thank Councilmember Parks and Mr. Smith for raising the issue last week, and of course, Councilmember Miskowski for this new motion, which I think addresses at least some of the concerns that were raised last week. On an issue like this, in the wake of a consent decree, I, you know, my, the bells start ringing when someone with 40 years' experience, who was responsible for this department, and a colleague who is, you know, currently a reserve police officer, asks some basic questions. And if you remember last week, some of my concerns in speaking to the inspector general was, you know, he essentially said, "Look, we're going to create mechanisms to review this." My question was, well, that's good. That's a step in the right direction. We want to create mechanisms to review this, but we're reviewing it after the fact. What about while it's happening? And so, some of the questions that were asked, and I'd like to hear, is in a situation where, as Mr. Parks says, this has never been done before, at least in this department, what is the compelling reason, one, to start doing it? Two, what are the mechanisms that we have in place, oversight mechanisms to ensure that it's not abused? Because I think we'll all agree, and I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't understand why some people would be concerned. This is the kind of thing that could be abused. What are the mechanisms that we have to oversee, you know, either secondary or tertiary mechanisms to oversee and ensure that these activities are done appropriately? So, those were two of my concerns. I do appreciate Ms. Miskowski addressing the issue, you know, more fully here and responding to some of the concerns that have been raised. But I'd like to know how an answer for, one, what's the compelling reason to do this, to change what has been a longstanding practice of not using these kinds of informants? And two, what are we doing to oversee this as it's happening, not after the fact?
Yes, sir. I mentioned a lot of the controls that we have, and that we do have it as a manual that was redone in 1993, excuse me, 2003, that controls virtually every aspect of the informant, whether it's meeting with them, or just talking to them on the phone, and having supervisors meet with them before there's ever anything done with them. And it's approved at every level up through the area commanding officer or whatever entity they're involved in.
Okay, so, help me for a second. Maybe you did say that and didn't totally understand. Go through it with me. How does it work?
Okay.
What happens? An informant walks up to a uniform police officer, or does a uniform police officer go to the informant, then they both go to the supervisor, then the supervisor goes to the captain or commander. What's the process?
Okay, I'll take you through, and when you get tired of hearing all these details, I'll let, just let me know. But we, under the new manual, there are specific definitions for what constitutes an informant. Someone who's directed by an officer, someone who wants to be compensated, or someone who's working for a letter of consideration, in other words, they want to work off a case.
So, we can precipitate and/or they can precipitate.
However the contact comes. Then, what is required of the individual who's handling, whether a uniformed officer, I presume, or the way he is now a detective, have to determine if this person qualifies under those criteria, obtain supervisory approval, and explain the type of info that's going to be obtained. What do we expect to get from this person? Positively ID that person, determine to you if she has a California operator's license, if they have warrants or warrants. Ascertain all that information. Contact investigative support detail, which is an arm of narcotics division, to see if in fact, that's been, the person's been a current or a former informant. We have a database, and we can determine if they've ever made an informant before, either for us, or determine if they've been an informant before. We document that in the package in the exceptional handling report. We require the undesirable informant file via the informant coordinator in my office to determine whether or not the person's in the undesirable informant file. Then, there's a preparation of the entire informant control package, which we have here, and it's down to chapter and verse as to how that's put together, because of all our audits and because of the way we're organized, I mean, which side, which page, how far down, and everything that's required in each one of those. There's exemplars and a checklist for detectives or officers, whoever would be heading them, and explain to them how to fill out each one of these forms and what's required. Complete the information in form of the forms, it's where the motivation, associations with other agencies and those kinds of things address, also addresses probation and parole issues, pending cases, any other relevant contact information regarding that individual.
And this is discussed with the uniform police officer's supervisor? Who would that be?
Well, a uniform officer would work for a patrol sergeant in most situations.
It would be discussed, it would be discussed with a patrol sergeant? Who else would have knowledge?
Okay, this is just, I'm just talking about putting together this package, all these things that go together. You can't use the informant until this entire package is put together. It goes through that supervisor, the lieutenant, the commanding officer of the area, and to me, you can't use them until I sign off on the bottom, until everything in this thing is assembled and put together.
Because, to be honest, part of my concern last Friday was nobody could sit here or stand and speak to that oversight. And when you have a change in practice in the way that Mr. Parks has identified, and when we're in a consent decree situation that has identified a series of problems and some abuse of authority, you know, when there's an inability to respond to those basic questions, and I was, you know, I was pretty clear about my concern, you know, is there, you know, secondary, primary, secondary, tertiary, you know, oversight? And what you're saying here is you put together a package of protections and a checklist of accountability that's discussed with a patrol sergeant, lieutenant, a captain, the commander, and you. And you are, again...
I'm the commanding officer of narcotics division, and they, in order to put oversight in one particular position, they chose narcotics division because we have the most informants. And I sign bottom line on every informant package. And unless everything in this package is right, and I mean exactly right, because of the way we get audited, and this is my man that does it, and he's the one that's brought us from marginal compliance a year ago to almost literal perfection, these packages, unless they go through him, unless I think they're essentially perfect, then informants don't get used.
I'd like a little, just more questions, a couple more questions, Mr. ...
Okay, and then Mr. Ludlow is our next speaker.
Yes. Secondly, how many departments in the nation, especially big city departments, have a policy similar to this one?
I can't tell you a number. But all I can tell you, in my discussions with other drug commanders, they did, in talking in how they handle informants, I was amazed at the lack of control compared to us, that a lot of departments have.
So, your sense is that we have, with this package of...
I don't think there's any doubt that we have stricter controls than anybody else in the country on informants. Absolutely.
That's important.
Some of them have as little as one, a card that you put the individual's name down on and say, "Yeah, this is my informant."
The last question I have, what mechanisms for evaluating the, this new procedure are in place so that after a year's period, we can say, this is how it's worked, it's been effective as a crime fighting tool, it's not been abused, those, what kind of criteria do we have in place? And finally, as I understand this, this has to go to the consent decree folks to get some kind of waiver, is that correct? So, if you could answer those questions, and that's my last.
In terms of oversight, I would basically echo what Mr. Barath, the inspector general, said. One of his specified duties under the consent decree and what he will be doing, or his office will do after the consent decree is gone, is to actively audit, among other things, the informant process, or to audit the department's audit of the audit process. It starts very, it's a tiered process. It starts with audit division, which does a full-blown forensic audit. It is not a simple inspection where they look at some paperwork and do very, very detailed work. That audit is then audited by the inspector general, who brings their own independent look at conclusions. That audit is also audited at this time by the office of the inspector, I'm sorry, office of the independent monitor. So, we get feedback from those two very important independent entities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the indulgent.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your questions, Council. Just again, colleagues, I think that the important thing here for today is to carefully look at the motion in front of us, this motion, in fact, introduced by Councilmember Miskowski and Miskowski. Bring this back in 30 days, but the important thing here, colleagues, would allow the consent decree modifications and clarifications in the entire package, with exception to paragraph 108, to move forward. And that's something that I think we need to do. And the points that have been raised here today, unless I'm misstating, let me... This would allow them all to go forward, but this one not be implemented until they come back. So, it'll all go forward, but they would never be able to utilize this until they come back in 30 days.
That is my understanding.
Well, let me just be very, very clear that they could not move forward on 108 until they brought this back into... So, I think that that, last week, we didn't have this. Last week, it was either to vote this whole package up or to vote this whole package down, if I understand it. And I think what the chair of public safety has now done allows the package to move forward, but this one would not be implemented. So, I would encourage an eye vote on this motion with the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. That closes our speakers. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll on the item as amended.
And then, did you want to receive and file accreditation, one B?
We're receiving file one B and open the roll on the item as amended.
One A, as amended, and that's also item two on this, so...
Great, okay. Let's take up that package. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Colleagues, we are down to eleven, and we have another five items, so hope we can sit tight and try to get through. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Item is approved. If we can take up item eighteen next.
And that was called Special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to ask staff to come up on this issue. I just had a couple of concerns on this new law that deals with distractions, and I just wanted to get some insight as to what the ration, what the rationale was.
Okay. Do we have any staff available for this? Okay. Why don't we hold, I don't know if we have any staff available right now. Should we hold that on the desk? Okay, let's see if we can get some staff. We are now down to ten members, colleagues, so please, folks that are here, please stay. Next item.
Excuse me, next item is item number forty-one, that was called Special by Councilmember Parks, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Okay. That is before us. Mr. Parks, anything you'd like to say? We've got the item before us as amended.
Forty-one, just merely, we want to adopt the Housing Committee report, and then with modification, because LA Housing found some additional funding, we want to add the eighth district in sixty-five thousand plus dollars to this original report and move the report forward.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll on the item. Please close the roll as amended and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with please on that item. Next item, please.
Next item is President, item number thirty-four was called Special for Cars from the Public.
Okay. And after we take this, colleagues, we do have staff available for item eighteen, so we'll return to that. Item thirty-four, I'd like to call forth Mr. Jim McQuiston to speak to us on this item.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. As you know, I'm a strong supporter of neighborhood councils. One of the problems that we're having is a budget crisis. The neighborhood councils each have fifty thousand dollars to spend as they want to. We're having a twice-yearly conclave, which I also support. And if each neighborhood council ponied up for the fifteen thousand dollars it costs for the convention center, they'd be spending about a hundred and eighty-five dollars to have their convention, which is very useful, and they can afford it. They're having trouble spending their fifty thousand dollars, as I've gone around to them and listened to their deliberations on their budgets, which means that while up city is in a great budget crisis, the neighborhood councils don't realize there's a budget crisis because they haven't been impinged upon at all. And I think it would be very salutary for the neighborhood councils to contribute to the convention center so that the convention center isn't really put in a hole by all these offsets. And so I would urge this council to take a look at having the neighborhood councils actually contribute to their own convention by ponying up this hundred and eighty-five dollars apiece, which is necessary to put on this convention. And I reluctantly ask this to be done. Some of them haven't gotten their fifty thousand dollars yet, but next year, there will be four million dollars in the budget for this kind of operation. And I'm sure they could afford to have that put on their tab for the next year's budget.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? If not, we have this before us, so we'll please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, I believe staff is here on item number eighteen.
Okay. We're gonna have staff come forward on item eighteen, which we held on the table. And turn the floor back over to Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I just had a couple of questions. In reading the document from the CLA's office, it lists a number of issues that are considered activities that are distracting. And one of the concerns I had is whether, operationally, whether we're putting officers in a situation where most of these, if they are a major distraction, create other violations, so they are straddling the line, running a red light, they're impeding traffic, they're making left and right turns illegally. Whether, whether this is an add-on violation, or are we seriously considering that we're going to cite people if we see them in a car with a newspaper, or we're going to see them in a car that's adjusting their radio, or those kinds of, is that what we're striving for, are those kinds of violations?
According to the bill, they did have an amendment in the bill on March twenty-third to provide that it would prohibit law enforcement officer from stopping a vehicle when a person is engaging in a distracting activity unless the officer observes that the vehicle is being operated in an unsafe manner.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, is that they have to have the other violations?
Yes.
And generally, the other violations is more serious than what it needs to be, this distracting activity?
Yes, as I understand it.
I'm gonna ask Dennis Zine as a motor officer, just how that works, in the sense that if you have to have other kinds of criminal or violations, then how does this help?
Well, I have a concern about attention to driving. I know for many years, they've tried to establish a code, attention to driving, where you read the newspaper, or shaving, or some other distraction, where now we've got cell phones and television sets and navigating systems on the dashboards of vehicles, which would then cause the motorists to either impede traffic, weaving, straddling, a variety of other factors. I think what it does is give traffic enforcement officers greater jurisdiction, a greater authority, greater probable cause to stop an individual, and then the cause may be the fact they're watching television, the fact maybe they were reading the newspaper, or they're on the cellphone or on their Palm Pilot, or their BlackBerry, or whatever the case may be. They're so distracted now, and I think what this does is give them a greater ability to bring people back to the responsibility of driving and paying attention to driving. So, as I understand, what comments you're saying is that it would not be a violation in itself, but there'd have to be another violation attached to this, straddling, impeding, weaving, impeding too fast, whatever the case may be.
Yes, sir.
So I, I don't, this started with the cellphone situation, where Senator Murray wanted to expand it from the distraction caused by a cellphone, and there are some people that say cellphones are destructive, some that are not distracted. Clearly, my personal experience on the roads has found that people on cellphones are impeding traffic in many, many cases, are not paying attention. There's no law against that. The Senator Murray wanted to broaden that, and this is the result of that, where it would be a broader category. Someone could be on a cellphone impeding traffic and be cited for impeding traffic. But I think what this does is give the officers a more probable cause to make a traffic stop, and then to decide if there's another factor or a warning that they'd want to leave the motors with. I would not be against, I think it'll make our roads safer. We know statistics show more crashes, more people getting injured and killed, and I think this is another tool to bring people back to the responsibility of driving and not be as distracted and sway away from driving and be removed from driving responsibility that they become with the car and the technology. And the newest is a television set on the dashboard where people are actually watching television, driving down the roadway.
Mr. Zine, Mr. Parks?
My only concern is, when you look through this list, you know, a tough one is eating and drinking. I don't know, I mean, if somebody's riding down the street with a bag of french fries like I do all the time, whether, and I don't, you know, and you violate the law, whether that's a, something that we can impose. Those are the kind of general things that I think eventually this law will go by the wayside, because it's just too general in nature.
Well, if, if it's abused, one lady spilled coffee and received a lot of money on that. So we've gotten so far, and coming from a traffic background, many years I spent there, we've come so far away from responsibility of driving, where everyone was taught to put two hands on a steering wheel and drive and concentrate. We are so removed from that now. That's just a secondary issue. As long as you're somehow stirring with your legs while you're talking on a cellphone and working on your Palm Pilot, as long as you're somewhat in that lane of traffic, and that probably contributes greatly to the number of people who are getting killed and injured on the roadways, and it becomes more and more congested. So I think we need to bring it back to the basics. You're driving a car, it's a responsibility, you should be responsible when you're driving, and not be so distracted, because we've got too many distractions when we're driving cars now. I would think it's a good measure, and it will help bring back a sense of order to the roadways, which we know with road rage and aggressive driving have become very unsafe areas for all of the state of California.
Thank you very much.
From the councils...
Yes, please.
From the councils' information, this bill has passed the Policy Committee and the Senate, and yesterday, it cleared Senate Appropriations Committee.
Okay. We have this before us. Mr. Parks, any motions on that, or any formal motions you'd like to make?
No, I, one of the things in going through the list, I mean, interacting with your children, eating and drinking, I just think it's so broad that I could not support it, because it's something that will just end up in the courts and go away anyway. But I don't know if you can control people's actions to the point that they can't speak with their kids or passengers while in a vehicle, and we find that distracting. I just think it's just too broad.
We might ask the CLA for a french fry study too, so we'll keep you on that. Mr. Villarogosa, and to be followed by Ms. Misakowski.
Yeah, let me speak to that, members, that, President, I came back up to, to address this situation. The legislature has been looking at this issue for some time, both the Senate and Assembly, and I dare say legislatures around the country. And if you remember, Mr. Cardenas, when he spoke at the last opportunity when we voted for the Semidion bill, which just was specifically limited to telephone use, one of the things he raised was an issue that frankly, a number of us should have raised, and that was that there's a University of Utah study, my understanding, I believe Nebraska as well, have come out with, with studies that in fact indicate that cellphone use isn't the only distraction that causes accidents, that there are a number of other activities that we do. I was mentioning in committee just the other day, that I was getting off a plane on the five, and someone was putting on their makeup, not for a few seconds, but literally driving like this, putting on their makeup for about a mile. And I was saying that the legislature, in addressing this issue, has looked at a number of studies, has now the support of the Auto Club, and believes, after engaging experts from all around the country, that the more appropriate way to address the issue of distracted driving is to broaden this bill. And that's why we've asked, we've reviewed it in committee. It's not a perfect bill, no bill is, but this bill better represents what the experts, and, you know, in this case, the Auto Club believes is better public policy. With respect to the issue that was raised by Mr. Parks, none of these activities in and of themselves, you know, are situations that, you know, would qualify as distracted driving. There has to be some observation on the part of law enforcement and the like. And so, to the extent, and some, you know, so to the extent that we have reviewed this, the legislature and a number of studies have said this is a better way to go, I would urge you, I vote.
Thank you, Ms. Villarogosa. Ms. Misakowski, to be followed by Mr. Cardenas.
I'm happy to support this, and I'd like to think of maybe even looking at going farther, because I mean, basically, not driving with distractions and listing little items of distractions, and we could just continue, but technology is always out there. Members, one of the things I just recently learned, and I think it should be mandatory, there are these GPS systems now in many cars, and many cars don't allow them to be used when the car is moving. And I think that cellphones should only be allowed to be used in cars where there is sort of an automatic hands-free, and there should be some that maybe shouldn't be used at all. We can, technology today can work with us. It may not help the makeup situation, it may not help the eating, but look at even the eating and drinking, what is now common in a car that never was before, the cup dispenser. You never had that in automobiles. So our automobile manufacturers are leading the way in terms of giving us this distraction, or giving us the distractions that are out there. But, so I, I think anything we can do to be more purposeful and ask the state legislature as well as the national automobile manufacturers for whatever new device that is a convenience, that is helpful, or whatever, to make sure that those that are getting more intricate, more detailed, more technologically complicated, that those don't operate when the car is moving. I think it's as simple as that, and, you know, again, the eating, you're always gonna perhaps be able to sip a, a cup of coffee or something, and not be that distracted. But the other issues, I think we should be much more certain, much more specific, and much more detailed in terms of not allowing these things just to grow, because we are creatures of habit, but when manufacturers make it easy for us to be that way, we easily succumb. So I have no problem supporting this, and just helping and hoping that the CLA and the legislatures, legislators really look to toughen up this law, with whichever way the Highway Patrol and the enforcement, law enforcement agency are telling this speech to be done, because they're there seeing the results of the distracted and dangerous driving.
Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski, and Mr. Cardenas is our last speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Villarogosa is absolutely right, this issue's been troubling around the legislature quite a bit, not only the California legislature, but many legislatures around the country, and it seems to be getting to a point where it's getting further and further today than it has in the past. What's the report out of Sacramento when it comes to, what was the vote count in the committees that it has passed, and it came out of the Senate now?
It's on the Senate floor, and the vote in Senate Appropriations yesterday was seven to four, and...
So seven affirmative to four, no votes?
Yes.
And it was amended coming out of committee, or is amended before the vote?
It was amended on March twenty-third, there was no amendment taken yesterday.
Okay, so they were able to, be able to study and they voted on the current form of the bill?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, one of the things that I wanted to point out is, the studies that have come out have actually shown that cellular phone use isn't necessarily the biggest distraction when it comes to distractions while driving. It is a distraction, but some of the things that have come out a little bit higher was, as was mentioned by Mr. Villarogosa, was putting on makeup, shaving while driving, eating while driving was a big, big factor in, in people's inability to, to drive accordingly and navigate their vehicle. One of the things that, that it gets a little bit gray is what kind of activity? For example, if a parent or an adult has some children in the car, are they allowed to converse with them if they're in the backseat? Children love to get your attention, especially when you're doing something else and not paying attention to them. Those are the kinds of things that, does this, does this bill address that kind of activity, or just specific, it talks about specific distractions, such as the kind of activities that were described earlier, cellular phone use?
No, it mentions interacting with children, animals, passengers, objects in the vehicle.
Objects in the vehicle, how about nagging? Is that covered?
I don't see it in the list, no.
Anybody who's ever been nagged, or, you know, backseat drivers, things of that nature, I mean, that's a big distraction. Quite frankly, all joking aside, if somebody's trying to tell you where to turn, instead of a child telling you, mommy, daddy, can I, you know, open my baggage chips or what have you, that interaction's addressed, but is it, does it address specifically the interaction of somebody trying to tell you how to navigate the vehicle, whether or not they don't have their hands on the wheel? Does it address that? The reason why I bring this up is because hopefully, this is a very convoluted issue, it's an issue of public safety, and it's something that eventually needs to be addressed. But I'm not sure that today we're able to taper it down in a way in which it can be enforced, and secondly, in a way that actually covers the whole gamut of things that it should be covered. I have a question, if you don't mind, from my colleague, Mr. Zine. I assume, Mr. Zine, you've actually pulled people over in the past or what have you. A bill like this, a law like this, that would have to be enforced by an officer, doesn't it come down to a very clear he said, she said? If you're not talking about giving them a ticket for failing to signal because they were distracted, or changing lanes, or something like that inadvertently, because you're talking about, well, you were actually engaging with... about, well, you were actually engaging with your children in the car quite a bit, and I was following you for a little while, so I should be giving you a ticket? Doesn't it come down to he said, she said, when it's not a specific violation that everybody's accustomed to?
But it's the same he said, she said, in any and all violations, whether it's a speeding violation, or a red light violation, or a U-turn violation. The officer observes something, the violator either admits or denies, it's always down to that. Unless it's caught on videotape, it's up to the testimony of the officer in court whether that is a citation in court. Well, if so, it's always a he said, she said. If someone, an officer says you're going 60 miles an hour, and you say you're going 40 miles an hour, the officer observes something, and you admit to something else. So it's always going to be that way. But what this will do, it will emphasize safety, it will get us back to the basics, which we've gotten so far removed from, of the concentration and the emphasis that driving is a responsibility, but we have so many distractions, whether it's drinking a soda, or eating french fries, or talking on the cellphone, or watching a DVD, or the children in the backseat, or the dog in the backseat, or putting on your makeup, or reading the newspaper, whatever it be, people do not drive in a responsible manner. And that's why we have so many people getting killed and injured in our country, because we've become so removed. And I commend Senator Murray, who brought this about, to start with the cellphone distraction, and now it's blossomed out to really getting back to the basics of driving a car. We have soundproof cars, we've got radios and air conditioners, you can't hear the sirens. Talk to the fire department, they don't yield the fire trucks, ambulance, it's police cars, nothing.
So enforcing this kind of law doesn't rise to any level higher than police officers have to deal with today?
Exactly.
Okay.
And if anything, it'll make it a safer street and a safer society.
I'd just like to point one more thing out. The bills that were seen in the legislature over the past years were less comprehensive than this bill. I think that being much more comprehensive and forthright about what the issue is, it's about public safety, it's not about the sexy issue of, are we taking cellphones away from drivers? Because that certainly got a lot of press. You're absolutely right, Mr. Zine, it needs to focus on public safety. I would look forward to have my vote support this kind of bill, but I'm not sure this bill's in a format that actually addresses the issue as pointedly as Mr. Zine pointed out that it should. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 43 was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, item 43.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I questioned item C and D on this report as to the impact on families that need special treatment for children with special needs, and the ability or inability of some school districts to provide that, and that's what this bill would stop them from doing. What the parents have asked for is the ability to take their children to a private school that specializes in the needs of adaptive children, children that have special needs. And I just can't see why we would prohibit a parent from the ability to take their child to a school that specializes in those things. And so that's what I asked for last week, and I don't see anything that's changed in the week. The question was asked, what is the need, and why are we opposing this? And I don't see that yet, so...
As chairman of the committee, I ask that we hold this until we get your answers.
Okay.
So let's hold...
Is there any objection to...
For a week.
For a week. But, Madam Clerk, are there staff here? I apologize. Thank you. The CLA just informed me that staff are here.
There's the podium right there, there's microphone.
Mitch Pomerantz, I'm the ADA Compliance Officer for the City of Los Angeles, and I'm also responsible for our department's legislative policies. The bill in question is, is nothing more than another attempt at giving public money to private schools. It's a voucher program. We work very closely, our department, our Commission on Disability, with the LA Unified School District, and in fact, we have just established a Special Education Committee to work with LAUSD. We all know that, in fact, there are concerns regarding how children with special needs are dealt with on, at the district level and at district schools. But I can tell you, outside of my work here with the city, I've been an advocate for thirty years in the disability community, and I'm very familiar with what goes on in the public schools, public schools around the country, and I have talked to literally dozens of persons who have experience with private schools. And for the most part, private schools do an even less adequate job than do the public schools in educating children with special needs. Those that do, however, do a good job, under the Individuals and Disabilities Education Act, districts may be required, in fact, to pay for special services, including some school services provided by private schools. I can tell you personally that it's done, because I have a family member who many years ago had their child attend a private school for at least part of the day, funded by LAUSD. So the point is that this amendment, this bill, is not necessary. If a child can be better served at a private school, the school district will fund it, and this is just another way to get it, privatizing the education system, and in some cases, that might be a good thing. But in this case, I don't believe the evidence demonstrates an overwhelming need for it.
Still on my time. Thank you. And I appreciate, Mr. Pomerantz, we've talked many times over the twenty years you've been here, and you're a leader in this, long before we had the department. But I disagree. First of all, this is not about protecting LA Unified, and you are right, in small school districts, they may opt to allow the child to go to a private school, and they pick up the tab. LA Unified won't do that, and that's part of the problem. Some of the big districts won't give the parent the option. Now, you've mentioned that some of the schools, private schools, do a worse job. That may be the case, but the parent has the option at least to pull the child out and put him someplace else, or take him back to LA Unified, or whatever the school district. Here in the city of LA, there is a lawsuit in the San Fernando Valley of parents who are suing LA Unified because they're not getting a very good education for their children in need. And I think the parent should have the right to determine if the school district cannot provide an adequate education, they have the right to take their child wherever they want. This is not about vouchers. This is a very small segment of the school population. This is not a voucher, or in or around on the voucher issue. It's a very small segment of the population who have very specialized needs for not being matched by LA Unified, and in many cases, other school districts. This just leaves the parent the option to determine if they want to keep the kid in the public system, they have that option. If they feel that public school system is not providing them a specialized education for their child in special needs, then they have the right to take their child someplace else. It's really just allowing the freedom of the parent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you be prepared to vote on it today, Mr. Labange? Do you still have that before us? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pomerantz. We have this before us, colleagues. If you can please open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That item is approved. We have one more item left, and item 44, I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange.
Thank you, members. This is the Olympic torch relay, which is coming on October, excuse me, on June 16th, in celebration of the Olympic Games that will be held this summer. In Athens, we're one of, one of a few great Olympic cities in the world. Flight will take the torch from Mexico City to Los Angeles. This verbiage that has been circulated is approved by our city attorney to allow the mayor and the city attorney to review the contract, because the time's short, it's now on June 16th, to get it out to the special event, or the police escort, et cetera. I ask for an aye vote, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Anybody wishing to be heard on this? If not, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item is approved. And I know we have some information on the torch relay on our city's website, www.lacity.org. Does that clear the desk?
No, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those motions are posted and referred?
And there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Friday, May 7th, to arrive late for city business, a motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. He is excused.
Councilmember Zine also requests to be excused Monday, May 17th, for the special budget meeting, and Friday, July 9th, May 17th is for personal business, and July 9th is for city business. Those both meet council policy.
Okay, and Mr. Zine's excused for those dates as well.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, May 11th, for city business, that meets council policy.
She's excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused June 25th, 29th, 30th, and July 2nd for city business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Labange is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, May 5th, for city business, that meets council policy.
Okay, Mr. Labange is excused.
Right. I'm sorry, that was Councilmember Weiss.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Wednesday, May 5th, for city business, a motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves, and Ms. Misakowski seconds. That is approved.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, the desk is cleared. Time for announcements. Any announcements, colleagues? If I can start with one, I just wanted to thank Kevin Adler, who's been an intern from Occidental College in my office for this past semester. Wanted to thank him for his service. He got a motion written and approved by this council, and we know he'll take those good lessons back to Occidental College, and want to thank him for his service over this past semester, and wish him well. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two announcements. One goes hand in hand with Mr. Labange, discussing the Olympic charge. The Los Angeles Coliseum Commission is refurbishing and putting the 1984 Olympic rings back in operation. There's a ceremony on Friday, May 7th, 8:00 a.m. We're going to have Rafer Johnson there. As you remember, he led the charge for the '84 Olympics, Anita de France. Also Paul Sutherland, the current LA Laker announcer, who's a former Olympian, and also Mr. Steve Soboroff, who funded the refurbishment of those rings, and it will be at the Epic Center at 3890 Menlo. So we're encouraging anyone interested in the community to come out and support it. And also this weekend, on Saturday, May the 8th, we have the 11th Annual Revlon Run and Walk for Women at the Coliseum. A 5K run and walk is a health expo. It's a Mother's Day weekend. It will start and stop at the Los Angeles Coliseum at Exposition Park. Over 50,000 people will be present at this event for the 11th annual, and we just encourage everyone to come out.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements? Mr. Labange?
Just on that Saturday, May 8th, it will be the annual Fire Service Day, where firehouses throughout the city of Los Angeles will be open from 10 to 4 to welcome visitors to come in. This originally started in Los Angeles in 1958 as a community relations project, and now spread throughout the fire service. The second Saturday of the month of every May is Fire Service Day from 10 to 4. Visit your local firehouse, and also there'll be several displays throughout the city that we'll announce tomorrow, so people can come visit, including one at Fire Station 27, the Historic Fire Museum in Hollywood will have a great pancake breakfast. Thank you.
Great, and the bridge between City Hall East and City Hall has a great display of firefighters right now as well. Women in firefighting. Mr. Zine?
Tomorrow is Cinco de Mayo, a day of great celebration. We had a news conference this morning in the San Fernando Valley, informing people about designated the driver if they choose to drink the festivities of the day, to please be cautious and enjoy the celebration. I know it will be celebrated here in council tomorrow morning, Cinco de Mayo.
Okay. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, if I could ask everybody in the chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions, colleagues? Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two today, both longtime residents in the western communities. The first is Yoshio George Kanagai, who passed away on April 17th, suffering a stroke. He was 87 years of age and born in Gardena. He was a longtime president of the West Los Angeles Japanese American Citizens League, and very, very active in the Sawtelle community, supporting the Japanese American communities that grew up there. He was also a retired major with Military Intelligence Service and a member of the famous Fighting 442 Unit in World War II. His business profession was West LA travel, and he and his wife traveled and led a lot of tours throughout his life. He is survived by his wife, Toy, who was a stalwart at his side and involved in many community activities. Two sons, a daughter and a sister, who was also a resident in the West LA area. And we also lost last week, Lucien Haas, Lou Haas, as he was better known, was an influential aide and speechwriter to many Democratic politicians for more than 20 years. He was 86 when he died. He was a spokesperson for Alan Cranston for 30 years, as when he was US Senator, and Associate Press Secretary to Governor Pat Brown, a speechwriter for Jerry Brown, and an early advisor to then-Los Angeles City Councilmember Tom Bradley, who helped him develop his winning strategy in 1973, when he defeated the incumbent Mayor Sam Yordi. In retirement, he served with Attorney General John Vandencamp, Commission on Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse. He was, in 1964, he actually took a leave of absence from Governor Pat Brown's staff to be Public Relations Director for a measure to amend of the state constitution to remove all the anti-discriminatory housing laws. He really was a passionate person, and, you know, Tom Quinn said this with the news service. He, Lou, had been trained as a newspaper reporter, actually started work with the Los Angeles Daily News as a copy boy. He also served during World War II in France in the intelligence arena, and he was very, very known for his colorful writing, and I'd just like to share one such thought with you. He once compared the growing public clamor for an end to the arms race to the eruption of Washington State's Mount St. Helens in 1980. "One day the rumbling began," he said, "and shortly thereafter, a volcanic blast startled the world." Today, suddenly, in overwhelming numbers, people are crying out to stop the madness that has transfixed the Soviet Union and the United States. He was very, also active not only in the peace movement, but environmental movements. When he retired, he loved taking walks, identifying every flower that anyone stepped on or stopped to smell. He is survived by his wife, Jan, daughter Max Haas of Santa Monica, sons Lou, Dirk, Verden, and Jack, as well as five grandchildren. And his family has asked that contributions can be made in his name for any peace or environmental cause.
Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski. Ms. Perry?
If Ms. Misakowski wouldn't mind, I'd like to sign on to her first adjourning motion, as so many of the members of the 442nd are active in Little Tokyo, and try to honor them whenever I have the opportunity.
Thank you. Any adjourning motions? Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in adjourning today in memory of two people who passed away at really extraordinarily young ages. The first, Lynn Karen Deutsch, died at the age of 47, with an extraordinary amount of accomplishments to her credit. She was an astrophysicist who specialized in infrared astronomy and instrumentation. She designed and built the next generation infrared cameras for ground-based telescopes, and was a faculty member of Boston University's Institute for Astrophysical Research, and an associate of the Harvard Smithsonian Center for Astrophysics. She will be remembered and survived by her husband, Douglas Sandak, her son, Reed Deutsch Sandak, her sister, and her parents. I'd also like you to join me in adjourning in memory of a friend, of our friend Eric Señorho, whose friend Ezekiel Weber died very tragically, very, very young. Zeke was born in 1978 and was currently a law student at UCLA, my alma mater, where his accomplishments and achievements were already very notable. He's very involved in public interest law, and also involved in lesbian, gay, and bisexual, and transsexual rights issues there, and worked on the Dominier Journal of Sexual Orientation Law, which is named in memory of Jesse Dominier, who was one of just the giants at UCLA School of Law. And it's a wonderful journal that had been founded in Jesse's memory. Zeke was supposed to be the editor-in-chief for the upcoming year's volume of the Law Journal. Last summer, he worked at the ACLU. This summer, he was going to work at Gibson, Dunn &amp; Crutcher. He was a graduate of Dartford College, and it's very tragic to have lost someone clearly with so many extraordinary achievements to their credit, and who clearly had everything, everything, to look forward to as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I request we adjourn in memory of Erwin Lee Schwartz, passed away April 10th. Erwin Schwartz was born August 9th, 1927. At his passing, he was 77 years of age. Was born in Bronx, New York, moved to California at the age of two. Was a resident of Woodland Hills, where he lived with his wife, Joanne. Was a resident of Woodland Hills, where he lived with his wife, Joanne, fifty-five-year marriage. Erwin began his forty-year career in the aerospace industry at Marquess Aircraft Corporation, then joined Rockwell International, where he worked on the development of the B-one bomber. Erwin and his wife, Joanne, became the parents of four children, Stephen, Larry, Sandra, and Deborah. Lost his son Larry to a motorcycle accident in nineteen seventy-three. Erwin was an avid stamp collector since his days to the Boy Scout, and his collection reflects his love for history. As a key member of the aerospace industry, he also loved to collect anything that had to do with the space program. Erwin also enjoyed helping his wife, Joanne, in the garden. He was actively involved in politics and civic affairs, and played a key role in his neighborhood's fight against a magnet school in their community. He will be remembered by all as one of the nicest men around, and will be greatly missed by his family and friends. He's survived by his wife, Joanne, three children, Stephen, Sandra, and Deborah. May Erwin Lee Schwartz rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our Budget Committee will begin at two PM this afternoon, will continue our Budget delegations today for our viewers of Channel Thirty-five. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll. This meeting is adjourned.